Good evening and welcome to the December 3, 2019, meeting of the Milton Select Board. Our first order of business, we're going to move to item three, which is our executive session. It's an executive session regarding the National Prescription Opioid Litigation. And I'll make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the National Prescription Opioid Litigation, MDL. Actually, I see Ms. Conlon, and I neglected to mention that she's going to be a little bit late. Ms. Conlon, I believe will be recused from this regardless, but...
That's correct, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
So, the motion is to enter into executive session to discuss the National Prescription Opiate Litigation, MDL number 2804, believing that a discussion in open session might have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the board. And the Select Board will return to open session to continue the meeting very soon after that. So, that's the motion.
Seconded.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor? This will be a roll call vote. Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish? Yes, Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
I'll be recused.
Ms. Conlon is recused.
Thank you.
All right. So, we will be in executive session, hopefully fairly briefly, and then we will be back to the open session very soon. Thank you very much. And we are back from executive session. We'll go back to item two. Please join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice pro.
All right. Thank you for that. Item, I guess it is, we are going to go to item four, which is public comment. Is anyone here for public comment? Seeing none. No one? Anyone want to come up? This is the opportunity, if you want to say anything for the meeting. This is the public comment? No? All right. Seeing none, we will go...
Can you make them?
Sir?
Okay. I thought they were going to read something. No?
So, we want to make clear, so this is public comment. If you want to make a statement about anything that's on the agenda tonight, you should do it now, and then we can pick it up when we talk. Please.
Well, we really don't know what comments to make because we're here to be informed about the items on the...
Okay. That's fine. That's fine. That's great.
I would just say that I sent a letter earlier to all of you, pretty right before the meeting, as a representative of the Friends of Louisville's heart, so that will...
Mr. Maduno? Mr. Maduno?
Madunio.
Madunio, yes. Okay. Yeah, we received the letter.
Okay, good.
Okay, great. All right. So, seeing none, we will go on to item five, which is a discussion approval of the Henry National Prescription Opiate Litigation matter.
So, Mr. Chair, I'll be recused on this then.
All right. Ms. Conlon is going to be recused, so she should be leaving the room. So, just as a briefing, and I'll actually ask town council Kevin Freitag to join us in case there are any questions. And I can frame this very briefly. About a year, maybe a year and a half ago, we were, the town was approached by several law firms about joining a potential litigation against firms, against prescription drug firms with respect to opiate abuse. At that time, the town decided not to join with those law firms who had solicited us because at the time, there seemed to be a concern about costs and a concern about discovery. It wasn't clear how much it would cost the town to participate in that litigation, and there was a possibility of certainly a lot of time and effort in discovery. And so, at the time, we didn't choose to move forward with that. Since that time, those claims and those cases have been consolidated into one large litigation based in Ohio. And my understanding is that the judge in that matter is opening up a potential settlement to every municipality in the country, whether or not you signed on to be with one of the law firms. And so, for the purposes of negotiating a potential settlement, if a municipality does not opt out, then the municipality will be included in the potential settlement of that opiate litigation. So, that means that Milton, as I understand it, and Kevin, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Milton can receive the benefit of a settlement of that litigation without having to, without having had to join with a law firm and engage a law firm with the potential costs at that time. And in order to do that, in order to participate in a potential settlement of that litigation and receive some financial remedy, all Milton has to do is not to opt out, to not indicate that it's opting out of that litigation. Is that a fair summary, Kevin?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So, the question is whether we want to vote to opt out of that litigation, or whether we want to continue, whether we want to be part of that litigation for a potential settlement. And so, that is the issue on the floor. So, comments, questions from the members?
To me, there's no downside to opting in or not opting out, depending on how we word the vote. I think it makes a tremendous amount of sense to be a part of this. It can be pulled on.
Other comments, questions? Mr. Freitag, did we miss anything in that?
No.
All right. So, do we want to move forward and have a vote on this?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Go ahead. I wasn't in the executive session, so you may want to frame that.
Yes. It'll be a motion, it'd be a motion not to opt out from the litigation.
We can just read it right here, right? To remain in the negotiation class.
So, I'll make a motion, the town of Milton Select Board, for the town of Milton Select Board to remain in the negotiation class regarding National Prescription Opiate Litigation, MDL number 2804, for settlement purposes.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded, and I think that's sufficient. That motion's sufficient to have us not opt out, Kevin. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Unanimous. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you for your help on that. Item six, which is the discussion, oh, we have to, Kevin, could you let Katie know up this? Item six, which is the discussion of the program eligibility application received for the Ice House, for a potential 40B, received for the Ice House property. And I'm going to ask Mr. Clark to come up to answer some questions, perhaps, about this. So, we have received some of the materials, some of the materials that have been filed by the developers of that property with Mass Housing with respect to a 40B. We received the official notice yesterday, which we believe begins the clock in terms of our commenting on this potential 40B. And so, I think this, our initial discussion here is really about process and what we're going to do going forward. We have a 30-day period in order to develop comments, to provide comments on this program eligibility application for the 40B. And part of that, as I understand it, Bill, you can correct me, is posting the notice and putting it all up on the town website so that any resident can comment, seeking comments from all our boards and committees, and I think that process has already begun. And then, perhaps having a public hearing within that period of time, all so that we can, we can, we can develop, to the extent we want to comment on this prior to the end of that 30-day period. So, that's the frame up. Comments, questions? Bill, correct me if I was wrong on any of that.
You're right on all of those. I have my administrative clerk taking and putting the, all of the different, the application, the qualifications, the plans, all the different components being put to the website. It'll be under, it'll be on the main page of the town's website. Notice of it will be sent to all the boards and all the committees. So, it'll be Board of Health, Historic Commission, Conservation Commission. It went to all the department heads, it went to the planning board. So, the entire packet will go to each one of those electronically, and anybody that needs it, hard copy will attempt to put it together for them. It will be on the website, and I hope she can finish that by tomorrow. There is a site walk that's going to be December 11. Time hasn't been determined yet. If you follow the state regulations, 760.56.02, all boards and committees, the walk is open to the public. It's an explanation of what the applicant intends to do, where on the site their issues might be, items of interest on that particular site. I mean, the only one that sticks out is that they're in proximity to Pope's Pond, Pine Tree Brook, both of which are under control of the Conservation Commission. There's a component in the back, a small sliver that is floodplain. They have moved all of the project out of that particular piece of the floodplain, so less flood insurance. Other than that, it's 56 units, 14 affordable, 42 market rate units, 14 one bedrooms, 36 two bedrooms, 6 three bedrooms. The requirement of DHCD, that 10% of the units be three bedrooms or greater. The typology of the buildings would be that the existing, the two existing buildings, two existing main buildings are three stories and two and a half stories. Their plan is for a three-story with a parking under. 94 parking spaces in total, 44 outside, 50 underneath. One bedroom is approximately 725 square feet. Two-bedroom is between 1120 and 1150 square feet. Three-bedroom is 1300 to 1304, not to be specific.
Yep. And all of this will be up on the website. All of this information will be up on the website.
The pictures, the plans. They're all conceptual at this point. Needs to go through the permitting and could change either way.
Comments, questions from the members? Ms. Conlon.
Bill, for purposes of viewing public, some people have gone through this before with Muse and with the Henry's 40B and with the Randolph Ave, but for people watching or people who live in that neighborhood who have an interest, can you explain to them then after, assuming that we file a comment letter, the state agency weighs in with respect to financing, then with the board that this goes to, what the process is for an application and opportunities that the public will have to make comments during the process?
The, this is just the site approval application that Mass Housing will give them permission to move forward, to file a comprehensive permit. Comprehensive permit is a 40B permit. A requirement of the 40B permit is 25%, at least 25% affordable. There are, there is a period of comment time that goes back to Mass Housing for 30 days, which started yesterday. The public can make comments, they could make comments to the Select Board, they can make comments directly to Mass Housing. Once Mass Housing issues their letter to move forward, it's up to the applicant to file with the zoning board of appeals. This is a permit that will be handled just by the zoning board of appeals. It has nothing to do with any local board. All local bylaws are, any zoning is not, it's not there. This only has to deal with state issues.
So, is it fair to say, I'm sorry, Katie, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So, it's fair to say that at this program eligibility stage, we're providing comments to Mass Housing with respect to program eligibility, and then if they, if they begin the comprehensive permit process, then it goes to the ZBA, our ZBA?
Yes.
And then our ZBA can, can at that time also solicit public comment?
They will hold public meetings. Theirs is a six-month process. The only way the clock can be stopped is at the applicant's request. Zoning Board can't stop the clock, town can't stop the clock. The only way the clock gets stopped is if the applicant requests that it's stopped. Usually, that happens if there is a need for new information or further information that just didn't come forward in the, in the application itself. Right now, as department heads start to read what's in this, the site application, we have to figure out what pieces are missing. We want more information. We want to make sure that information comes forward, or we think it has a fatal flaw. We have to find out what that is. So, it's each one of our department heads going through, figuring out, what does this do or hurt within our purview?
Other comments, questions? Katie?
So, the point I was trying to bring out was that the residents of the town, and especially this neighborhood, and we have a few people here tonight who came to listen, so for their information, there'll be, they can, if input at this stage, at the project eligibility, eligibility stage, but then assuming it goes forward, then at a later date, there can also be citizen and resident input to the board of appeals at some point if they want to, as an neighborhood association or as an individual, they can make their views known.
Yep. And the chairman of the zoning board of appeals is really good at making sure that public comment is on the table. He does like to have the comments ahead of time so that he can disseminate to both sides. He wants to give it to the members. He also wants to give it to the applicant. If people have questions, ask the question. They have comments, ask the, make the comment, give it to both sides. It's a very public and open process.
Ms. Collins?
I have two questions. So, on page 30, it said that the applicant was basically dedicated to public concerted participation, but it didn't say what that was. So, I hear the town, you know, what the town's going to do, but I thought that was an interesting phrase and wondered if, you know, you've been through this before?
Yep.
And what might that look like on the applicant's side?
I think it's answering the particular questions that the public has. Going back after some of the last ones, the previous 40B filings, what were the environmental issues? Each one of them has stopped while more information was put together. It takes engineers, it takes wetland specialists to bring those things together, and it doesn't happen overnight. So, each one of those I know had, you know, the applicant stopped the clock while they figured those things out, and it extended a week or two. I mean, whatever that time period was, that the zoning board needed to get to their next meeting to make sure that the question was going to be answered, not, we're going to forget about it, we're going to move on. No, you give us that information. If there's a way to keep the process going, that's very good. I mean, you might be dealing with wetlands on one night, you're moving to transportation or traffic on the next night. They do try to keep them in their silos so that you can, it's easier to figure out. We have specialists, they have specialists, they will have a traffic engineer, they'll have a civil engineer. They need to address X amount of issues along the way.
Okay. Thank you. And my other question was, you sent us some really helpful accompanying material?
Yes.
One of which was the 40B handbook and then sort of an FAQ on 40B, and I was wondering if that could also go up along with this?
Yes.
Because I think other people might...
It is. I actually already have that.
I have it up.
The chapter 40B handbook for zoning boards. I have that one. I have the fact sheet on chapter 40B, the chapter did.
Okay.
And then I'll put up the guidelines, the chapter 40B guidelines.
Thank you. Okay. That's great. I think people will find that helpful.
That's the law. That gives line by line what the pieces are. The stuff that you just mentioned, that's the easy stuff. That's the stuff you should be looking for. That gives you the detail of why you're looking for it and what they have to provide.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Wells?
Same. I have two questions. I was chairman, Mr. Dennehy and I met with the developers months ago, months ago, when they first came to this proposal. So, my first question is, A, at the meeting we had, when they were leaning towards condos versus rentals, do you know if that's still the case?
Yes.
Okay. And the second thing is, as you know, and Ms. Conlon, my first year on the board, when it was David, Katie and I, was the dialogue and creation of this permit that was known as the Ice House. This is clearly something extremely dramatic from what the Ice House was approved as. So, my bigger concern, and I get the legality of it, and I understand the 40B aspects of it, but in the Ice House process, it was clear from all the input from the neighbors that they were truly starving for something commercial, a cafe type, something that, and I noticed that this, and as Mr. Dennehy knows, I was very clear on my lines to both developers when I met with them, that this was something that the neighborhood felt was important, that I think is important for us to fight for. And yet, and I know that at least one, if not two, members of the planning board articulated the same thing, if not too long ago. I know that we don't have a lot of, I don't want to use bullets in the gun for this, but I, we don't have a lot of, like...
I think you do. If you go back to the letter that came out from Mass Housing on November 27, it actually makes a comment about, "You may wish to include in your response issues or concerns raised by local boards, officials, or other interested parties. Your comments may include information regarding municipal actions previously taken to meet affordability, housing needs such as inclusionary zoning." It also, what other things have you done in this area? And the town having taken all the time to create the Ice House PUD, Planned Unit Development, the town did do something for this particular piece of property. We decided that, you know, we wanted to have commercial on that side of town. We included that it have housing as part of that. So, there are things that we have done, and those comments should be built into the letter that we send to Mass Housing, in my opinion. We haven't let this just sit. We have tried to, you're right. We want, we want some type of amenity in that part of town. This development, providing for affordable housing is one thing. Providing for a variety of housing type is something else, but at the same time, the neighbors asked for something that the town did everything in its power to attempt to work with the original owner to bring forward, and that would be the commercial entity. The town met with the applicants two weeks, two or three weeks before they made this filing.
I think it was August. It was late August. You, Mr. Gaius?
Right.
Myself?
But set it up and say, "Look, what can we, what can we do to, we understand what you want, we want you to know what we want, and what can we do? Does it mean we have to change the size of the store? We'll do that. Do we have to change the design of the building? We'll do that. What is it that you need for that property?" And we didn't hear anything until we got this.
Fair to say that they were, fair to say that, and just, I was in the meeting with Bill and Mr. Gaius, and it's fair to say that they, they were open to listening, and it was a, you know, it was a, I'm sure it was the same with you, Richard, it's kind of a fulsome discussion of what the neighborhood was interested in. And, you know, hopefully, that discussion will continue, you know, as we proceed through that process.
I know that, you know, this is the beginning of this again, for this project, and I understand that there's dollars and cents that are attached to this as well. But I also, as I said, I was brand new on the board. It was one of the first things that I dealt with, and it was the three of us, is that that neighborhood, and this is witnessed here again tonight, and, sorry, Joe, I didn't know what you were here for, and I should have known right away when I walked to the door and looked at the agenda, but, you know, the things that were approved, that did get approved in that Ice House, and I know there were a lot of changes at the end, were definitely things that the neighborhood really wanted, and to their credit, this wasn't a case of them just saying no. This was a case of them saying, "Okay, we understand it, but can you give us something that can enhance our neighborhood here, make our neighborhood better?" And I can't sit here tonight and say, "Okay, I get this. I see all this, but I just don't think that we can't, we may not win this in the, in the end, but I think we have to fight for that." If it was as important in 2016, then it has to be as important today, in 2019. That's just the way I view it.
Ms. Collins?
And related to that, that point of Richard's, I believe that I read in here that, like, page 28, that it's walkable to the Village Center, which they mean this part of town. But if you look at the teen center study, they'd like to cite the teen center here, not somewhere, you know, over on the parkway, because it, that's really not central. And so, I think it makes it even more important to really try to work with them to get that amenity and some other amenities that people would need in that area, but certainly to keep working on that.
You're right. I think there's a few inconsistencies in there.
Yes. Well, I would say that we disagree. There aren't retail service and employment in numbers that would, I just, I mean, yes, you can go get gas.
You get your snowball fixed.
You can get your snowball fixed, which I really appreciate.
Is that my shopping facility is less than a mile away?
And if someone has to walk down to Mattapan, that's great in good weather, but if you're bringing groceries back or something, like, it just doesn't...
That's not less than a mile.
It's not less than a mile.
That's what I'm saying. There's some inconsistencies in there, in their distances from the site. It doesn't make any sense that schools less than three miles, but the school is across the street and about four blocks down. It's like, it didn't make any sense. The numbers that are here don't make any sense.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Any other comments, questions about, Ms. Conlon?
I have a comment. I think since, I thought we were just going to focus on procedures tonight, but since Richard brought up the prior proposal, I think that's when we need to continue to discuss with the developer, and hopefully, the developer will be at the public hearing once we schedule one, and maybe there'll be an opportunity then to have some discussion or outside of that meeting, just to have some continued discussion.
I would expect that he'll go. I don't expect that he'll make any comments.
No, but I think that's something we could bring out, you know, that I think, I think if residents...
Sure.
And that is a priority for a lot of residents. We went through that two years, three years ago. So, we know that. So, I think that's probably something that will be brought forward, not only by elected officials, but by residents who come to a public hearing, and at least it can be voiced to the developer.
So, let's talk about, oh, Mr. Farrington.
I had a couple of follow-up questions to what you mentioned earlier, Bill, in this meeting that took place. Who was in the meeting? I guess you said it was yourself, Michael, and it was the developer, Mr. Bosworth, right?
Mr. Bosworth and his partner, Paul Driscoll.
And Mr. Gaius as well.
And they asked a variety of questions as to the size and the scope of any potential market or cafe or what have you, so creating the impression that they were interested in pursuing that sort of development, if you will. Is that what you, I was led to believe that that's, those are the types of questions that they asked in the meeting.
We told them that we were extremely, Cheryl Tegius was there too. Cheryl was on the planning board when this whole thing was written, when the PUD was written, the overlay. She knew what the numbers were, she knew the process of what we came up with. At the same time, we talked to Mr. Bosworth, Mr. Driscoll, and said, "We really want some type of store in that area."
Mm-hmm.
We really want some type of cafe. The people have asked for it. They've changed the design a bunch of different times, trying to work with something that would work on that particular site." We asked him, or them, "What would you need to make a store? What size store do you need? Is that what it is? We'll work to bring that change above."
That's what they said.
They did, but...
Well, let me jump in.
The reason I'm asking the question is that, just let me just complete my thought. If that is in fact what they said, and then they go and file this site plan, that seems to me a direct 180 to the conversation that took place in the meeting.
I don't think they were...
And you don't have to take responsibility for that. You're not asking me to do that. I'm just trying to get a handle on it.
Yeah, so let me give you a handle. Let me give you a handle. Let me give you a handle. It wasn't a 180. They at no time made any representation that they would, that they were willing to go down this path.
Okay.
They said they were willing to listen. And we talked. They didn't lead us to believe that they were willing to engage in a compromise. They said they were willing to listen and to consider things. That's all. They made no representation about that they were willing to do this, so...
They said their market studies showed that, hey, that commercials could not, of that size, could not fit on that site.
So, I don't, just to fill, I don't consider this to be a 180 in any way, shape, or form from the conversation. We tried to engage in the dialogue. We tried to get a compromise. We tried to get it going. It didn't happen. They didn't lead us to believe that it would happen and that this wouldn't. So, at least in my view, Bill, that was my view.
And the other part to that is, a 40B could have a commercial entity to it. So, it still may come above. It's just a matter of size, who... All in the application, all in the planning.
Right.
Not our planning, their planning.
Mr. Chair. So, just a follow-up. So, from our meeting, when we met, we didn't even know what they were going to, we just, they told us what they, and I asked you to tell, my memory on that day was it was even bigger than what's before us now. But strictly residential, no, and I'll be the first one to admit that you, I tried to go right back to where we ended, and they weren't opening the window. But my feeling, which got passed on to you as you became chair, was this was not my expertise. So, that's why I called the chair of the planning board to tell her, "Would you be willing to..." You crafted this, you were part of this. And I think that's how you guys got to where you got. But they, the same thing in our meeting, they didn't even, they seemed that they had a vision. That was the vision they were going to go with, and that was it.
All right. Anything further, questions, comments? Ms. Collins.
One final comment. Obviously, we have a real need for affordable housing in the town. So, you know, a proposal that would bring affordable housing, you know, is a good thing. And maybe that there's something that we can work with here. I want to review the application, go through all the attachments, and I'm sure we're going to have some specific comments. And often, things are negotiated, and there's an opportunity to provide comments. And maybe you refine a project, you get to a better project, I think, over time. But, so I think we should at least recognize, we have a real need. This is a potential to bring some affordable units to town. And hopefully, this will be a developer that we can work with. It would be nice if we could do something in cooperation.
And I agree with Katie on that. I get all that. And I just think that we need to, that was such, if you remember, that was such a campaign by that neighborhood to bring that ice house project to reality, to get it to the town meeting floor and get it. And I, granted, it didn't come to fruition, but it still had the ideals and the wants and the desires of not just the community as a whole, but more specifically, a neighborhood and town that really needs something like that. Is you just, no one's going to walk from there to even Milton Food Mart, never mind the grocery, the supermarket on Comics Highway at the Mattapan line to do that. Especially on, imagine on a day like today, you're just not going to do it. The only last comment I'm making, you can, maybe, I thought at one point it was a reference made to it being something like Corset Brook. But this is in our meeting. But this is what I'm saying.
I don't recall.
That's, I had that, I've had that in my head, so, but I, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Collins.
Oh, so I guess my last question, and I thank you, Katie, for your comments. So, process-wise, when do you want comments from us? How do you gather those? And not having done this before.
So, I'll take that, and Bill, you can fill in. We have, and we should talk about timing and process, because that's really the key here. So, the letter was dated the day before Thanksgiving, November 27th. We received it yesterday, December 1st. Some question about when the 30-day clock starts. Probably starts on the day we received it, which was yesterday, but we don't want to take any chances. So, I think we should aim to get our comments in before the end of this month, by the 27th. What that means is, you know, we'll have, you know, 26 days, 25 days from now to get comments from residents. We can schedule a public hearing for the week that we have a, week that we have our meeting in two weeks. We have, you know, we can schedule it in 14 days. The alternative to that is, given the holidays, we can ask our council to reach out to Mass Housing and extend that, to perhaps extend that 30 days into the new year.
We've done that, we've done that each time we've written one of these letters. Because the holidays are here, because it gets sent during one, it's extending into the next set of holidays, whether it's Hanukkah, Christmas, or the New Year, you're back in the holidays again. You start losing pieces of staff that have time at the end of the year. You start losing the public because they're preoccupied with something else. So, asking for extra time due to the holidays is not unheard of. We have done it each time we've done one of these. I would expect that we would do it again here. I don't want that to be as if I'm saying, "Well, we'll just push it off till the first of the year." That's not what I'm doing. I'm listening to you and saying, "Yes, we want that fast schedule." Because once you have all that information, you still have to synthesize and put it together and come up with one letter. So, it takes time for it.
So, Bill, in terms of, if we ask for an extension, and I think that makes sense, and we can, you know, our council's still here, so we can ask Kevin to reach out to Mass Housing tomorrow on this. How much, how much do you think we can reasonably ask for? Maybe Kevin can weigh in too. And how much do we need? And how much can we reasonably ask for? Are we talking about January 15th, January 30th? So, you tell me, what do you think is reasonable?
I'd ask for an additional 30 days, but all they can do is turn you down.
Well, we don't want to compromise our timing. We need to get an answer quick, because we don't want to, we don't want to get denied and then be behind the eight ball. Kevin, you might want to weigh in.
I'm happy to just reach out tomorrow by phone and speak with whomever it is that we have spoken with in the past, whoever it is that wrote this letter, and try to test the water and see what they think is reasonable and follow up.
All right.
Mr. Chair, it's Mike Busby.
Yep.
And there's a tentative date set for a walk on December 11th.
Right.
We could still do, we could still do a walk, though, right? We could still...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, this is just, this is just how long, this is just a question about how long, it's just a question, it's just a question about how long the comment period is going to go for us, and how long we have to collect comments. So, you think we can reasonably ask for 30 days, 30 additional days? Seemed like a little bit of a stretch to me, but maybe not.
You think too mu, you think that's too much to ask for?
Yeah, I mean, if it's a 30-day period and we ask for another 30 days, that seems like, that seems like a lot to me.
Tough time of year, though, to give us 30 days.
No, it is, I understand.
You take and throw in, we got it Wednesday, they did it Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I understand.
And we get it yesterday.
I understand, I understand.
So, you lost five days before you even opened the envelope.
I understand.
Right. We're going to do the same thing at Christmas time.
Yeah, I understand. Ms. Collins.
So, you customarily ask for another 30 days?
We ask for something more. I think on H&amp;W, we asked for an additional 30 days. It was a little more complicated, but we did. Milton Muse, we did the same thing. Again, a little more complicated, but they weren't, they weren't at the holiday period, but we did ask, and they did receive. I mean, if they give us three weeks, I'll take three weeks.
So, how about this? So, how about this? Kevin will reach out tomorrow. I think we should set a date for a public hearing tonight, in the event that we don't get what we want. And then we can always change it if we need or want to.
When does our 30 days end? As of now?
As of now, arguably before the first of the year. So, if we could have a public hearing, the soonest that we could have a public hearing is 14 days from tomorrow, right? We'd have to notice it, or is it 15 days?
Yeah, it'd be tough to get it in Thursday's paper today.
Right.
Well, why are we, why are we quit making a public hearing?
To get, to solicit public comments.
That puts you either to the week before Christmas or the week after Christmas.
I'm trying to think if there's a requirement that...
There's no requirement. This is just to solicit as much public, yeah, just to solicit as much public comment as possible. You know, residents can, you know, they can go on the website, and they can look at things, they can send us emails. But in terms of actually, you know, publicizing this and getting public comment, the better way to do it may be a public hearing. I could be wrong about that, but it seems to me that we, if we can do it, and I think we can, I think we should.
Mr. Chair, we did have a public, at least a meeting, I don't know if it was a full hearing, but we had a public meeting here in this room for the two that were pending around the same time, the Hendrys and the Randolph Fabb. So, because I remember people came and made comments on both of them the same night.
Right. And that's more what I was thinking. It's a public meeting that we're looking for comment. It's that hearing one that I questioned. But if you want to go that way, I'll...
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess, I guess I'm not sure what the distinction is.
Mr. Wells.
So, I'm going to give you an alternative, a compromise perhaps, which we depend, which we dependent on how town council makes out tomorrow. One is, I think we should probably schedule one within the 14 days, get it on the schedule in case we don't get it.
Right.
Because then we're boxed out.
Right.
And then, second is, let's just even give it on a 10-day continuance. Let's schedule a second date right now for like the beginning of January right away.
That makes sense. So, so...
And hopefully be able to go with a latter versus the earlier one.
So, and this, you know, this also includes publicizing it, you know, publicizing it in the paper, so that everyone can, we can get as much notice as possible. So, if we're talking about two weeks, two weeks out...
That's Christmas Day.
Two weeks from today. No, 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 no. Two weeks from today. We're talking about two weeks from today.
Eight to 17th.
Seventeenth, eighteenth. But we wouldn't be able to properly notify for a public meeting.
Because you can't get, we'll be on the, for the Times for this week.
Right, right.
So, if you go on the publication, let's say you go on the publication of the Times and go out two weeks from the 12th, you're on Christmas, you know, the day after Christmas.
Ask for 30 days.
I mean, you know you're going to get something, so...
Yeah, no, no.
Yeah, they'll negotiate if they don't want to give us 30 days.
Do you think verbally they might give you an indication tomorrow when you talk to them? Or do you think they'll make us send something in writing?
I think they'll inevitably ask us to send something in writing, but I'm happy to just reach out tomorrow and have the conversation, just to see, given the holidays and the board's concerns, if we could get 30 days.
Okay.
And we would meet January 8th and January 22nd. That's the second and fourth Wednesday in January.
All right. So, why don't we do this? We have a meeting scheduled on the 18th, right? So, if we have a meeting scheduled on the 18th, we can, we can put on the agenda a, we can put that on the agenda for soliciting public comments. It won't get publication in the paper, but we can publicize it as best we can. For people to come in, it'll be, it won't be, it'll be a public meeting, it won't be a public hearing, because we won't have the publication.
We can put it in on the 12th for the 18th.
Yeah. The 12th for the 18th? I don't understand.
Well, the 12th is a Thursday.
Well, but for a public hearing, you need two weeks, technically.
True.
Right. So, just let me, let me kind of play it out, right? So, if we do, if we do on the 18th, if we, if we, I guess we could put it in the paper, to your point, even though it's not technically a public hearing, we can put it in the paper.
For a public meeting.
For the 18th. Why don't we do that?
Plus, we go to Ledger as well, which publishes every day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's right. Why don't we do that? Mike?
No disrespect to him.
First agenda, right? First agenda item? Yeah, it's going to be a long one, probably. Maybe not be a long one, but probably will be a long one, by indication tonight, probably will be. All right, so let's, let's set it for the 18th. Anybody good with that?
So, one last question. So, you're not looking for, I've commented on nearly all of them as chief, never as, never, always from a public safety concern, never... What would our comments be from this board? To take all those and then come up with a final comment, like a collective comment?
Yeah, so the chief executive, we're the chief executive authority.
That's what I'm saying. We need time to synthesize these.
So, yeah, so we're the chief executive authority of the town. So, what we do is we, as Bill said, we collect all the comments and synthesize them and then submit.
Okay.
So, that's our role here. And we can put our own. We can vote on our own as well.
Mr. Chair, I think we'll have some of our own. In the, how do we want to start the drafting? Because that's going to have to be happened in the past. I know with Milton Muse is an example. And Bill can correct me if I'm wrong. Bill, I think on Milton Muse, six years ago, but I think you started the original draft. And it went to John Flynn, it came to our board. We were involved, we were editing it each turn of the draft. So, as more comments are coming in from departments, boards, and committees, it went through several iterations. So, that's how I would envision it operating, Richard.
So, it raises, that raises another question, which is, there is a provision for $15,000 for a consultant.
Yes.
Can we get that at this stage? Or is that, that's the next stage?
Yes.
All right. So, the question, and the question is...
That's for the comprehensive permit.
For the comprehensive permits.
That's for the zoning board of appeals to hire peer-reviewed consultants.
Right. So, then, so then the question is, do we want to think about hiring a consultant for this stage, to help us at this stage? It may be premature, but given that, given the fact that we haven't gone through this in a while, it may be helpful.
I think it may be premature, and I think you may want to save your powder for the next run. This is only the site application. You have an application that you'll, you'll have a comprehensive permit application coming next. That's, that's the big one. This is just...
I get what you're saying. So, get your ducks in a row.
Yes. This is...
Yeah, I mean, I hear that. I guess I, I don't want to give this stage, I wouldn't want to give this stage short shrift, right? And if it, if there's a benefit to be had.
Better your letter, the more you'll get.
What's that?
The better your letter, the, you'll get what you're looking for. It depends on the comments that you get from traffic, public utilities, don't stop one of these. But our making comments back on our zoning and every attempt that we've made on redoing the zoning on this does have an effect. This saying that we have a housing production plan, and we have a housing production meeting coming up that's actually going to be able to address this, probably in time for the 18th? I think we're doing that 9th?
Yes, we, I mean, that wasn't...
We're meeting with Karen, when?
We're meeting with Karen on the 9th. And...
Those comments will be instrumental in what we want to say
Right.
in this letter.
I should talk to you about shaping the agenda.
That's our new housing production plan.
All right.
Updated housing production plan.
All right. So, we don't have to take, we don't have to take a position, I guess, on this tonight. Maybe we think about it more, and maybe you're right, but I, I'd want to put our best foot forward at this stage.
I think we need to have a department head meeting that goes through the same explanation that we're having here, that we need the department heads to take and read what's here, figure out what their comments might be. And then, we have comments for you for the 18th.
And my only thought is that if we have someone who does this every day, as opposed to once every five years, it may help focus those comments from our department heads. So, yes, Tom? I'm sorry. Okay, sorry. So, all right, we can, we can think about that. But I think we have the process in place. We're going to have a public meeting on the 18th. We're going to try for a 30-day extension. And then, Ms. Collins.
Oh, I just wanted to speak to that. I don't know that a consultant would have the detailed knowledge that Bill's talking about. So, I can see why. He's saying it's not quite time yet, because it's... not quite time yet, because it's, it's really, the, the, the application, the, even their concept is very nebulous, but, but we, we know what we've been doing and what we've been about and, and what we're up to, and I think all the department heads know the town and their issues around the town much better than we could probably even convey to a consultant. I mean, a consultant would end up, it sounds like, writing something, writing what we tell that person to write, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So, Mr. Chair, just, historically, I'm just gonna suggest to you that, Mr. Chair, you perhaps want to have a conversation, you and John, and Chair along on the ZPA, he's, I think, that's what I did in the seven, you'll find it very, very useful.
All right.
Especially to that issue that, that issue you're talking about.
Yeah, no, no, and, no, I think, I think that's right.
He is going to be steering the ship. It gets completely taken away from...
At the next stage.
Yeah.
At the next stage, at this stage, it's, we're steering the ship at this stage, and then, once we, once we, pardon me, once we get beyond the thirty days, once we get beyond our comments, then it's all his, I understand that.
True, but we should be giving him information now, because he may, past experience with him will help immensely in this.
Okay, all right, anything else? Great, thanks for your time. So Kevin, you'll be in touch with Mike about the, the getting an extension.
Yes.
And we'll put on the agenda for the eighteenth, great. Thank you. All right, item seven, and Mr. Clark is here for that, follow-up discussion approval of the Traffic Commission recommendations to our parking spaces in East Milton Square. At our last meeting, after a lot of discussion with the chamber and with the planning department and the chair of the planning board, we, I think we, we had an agreement among all the parties that, that we would try to achieve some compromise by mid-January on getting some of the spaces, getting some of the spaces two hours as opposed to the whole town. And, so, we put this on the agenda to see if there's been any, any improvement, we've received some things from the chamber today, yesterday and today, so, so we put this on the agenda to see if we've, we've got any, any positive movement towards getting some of these spaces two hours. So, Mr. Clark, you can fill us in on whether there's been any, any positive movement on that.
I've been down looking at signs, wiping snow off signs, so I can make sure I get what the sign says. One of the comments that, at the last meeting, we said that the commission took a vote. We didn't take a vote that we wanted to support this, we said we took a vote to standardize what the signs say. At the last meeting, there, there was a lot of talk about fifteen minute signs, well, those fifteen minute signs are for a specific period of time. If you go to the Central Ave Business District, it's six to ten, and that's in front of Tino's. If you go to East Milton, there's three spots on Adams Street, the fifteen minutes between five PM and nine PM. There has been discussion with the chamber and Walt Chan about the fifteen minute in front of Mr. Chance, and if I can use the plan. So, these three spots here have fifteen minutes, during the day, they're all an hour. This is what the chamber came in and said that they would like to change these one hour to two hour. They're also looking on Granite Ave to change some of the thirty minute to two hour. If Millie's down here and you're getting your hair done, you can't get your hair done in thirty minutes. Maybe we can, but I don't think women can. If you're going in to buy a house and you're going into Kelly and Reji, chances are you're gonna need more than thirty minutes, otherwise you're running outside and moving your car again. So, changing some of these to the, the two hour do make sense. The first three spots here are no parking, although they're marked out, and this is the loading zone. Well, the town is going through a process, we signed a contract with Beta Engineering to come back and study a loading zone for East Milton Square. We do not know where it's going to be, I would be willing to bet it's not going to be here, because it's not convenient to stores in the middle of the square. That being said, taking this loading zone out now, making these spots up to the first three, and changing those to two hours, we're giving the chamber something that they asked for. Changing out the fifteen minutes down here, essentially changing these, it's the same thing, we're just changing this block to two hour. It's two hour on the backside, it's two hour on this side, so that gives that whole block the two hour. Minus the three spots which are outside the fast food stores, which are Brugers and Kumon, Kumon has a lot of kids that are getting dropped off, so if I'm dropping my child off to go inside, I don't need two hours to drop them off. I don't, I really want the spots to have a lot more movement. I'm not taking away some of the short-term parking, because I have it all down here in front of Milton House of Pizza, the nail shop, nail shop and the dentist both have a parking lot in the back, so if somebody's coming in and they're getting longer, or just go across the street. Same thing, if I'm going to get takeout, these are the spots that turn over quicker, I just cross the street. Because of the traffic pattern that's in here, I can make it across the street, so we have made it a little bit more pedestrian friendly. We're using short-term on the south side, long-term on the north side. And I think it, it works for all the people that are down in that area. At the same time, we're coming back, we're going to be studying this in the traffic model. We can come back and visit the rest of them, but it also, it works for the traffic enforcement person, because we're now giving him something that's a little more standardized than helter-skelter.
Comments, questions?
I'll go last.
I'm sorry, oh, go last, okay.
Go first.
You might, you might, you might be, any, any other comments, questions? Bill, just, oh, Ms. Collins.
Oh, ask Bill your question.
I was just gonna say, so, so Bill, you suggesting changing the loading zone or just keeping it as is for now?
I'd take the loading zone up, because they're not using it now. The only people using the loading, the loading zone is happening on Franklin Street. The loading zone for returns is coming out the back door of the liquor store, which is on Adams Court anyways. The majority of the, of the liquor that gets delivered, they're double parking on Granite Ave as it is.
So you'd take out the loading zone and you'd, you'd have two hour all the way up to those three fifteen minute spots right at the end?
No, those three thirty minute spots.
On Granite, right in front of Brugers? Those are...
Those are thirty minute.
You sure? I thought it was a fifteen, there's a fifteen in front of Brugers, I thought.
One.
Yeah, there's one fifteen.
That's what you just mentioned.
So you'd keep that?
I know they're here, I didn't see a thirty, I'm sorry, thirty.
Now, there's a fifteen in front of Brugers, there's definitely a fifteen in front of Brugers.
I'm not looking to change the first three spots in front of Brugers anyways.
Right, okay, all right, that's, I understand, comments, questions?
So, I have a couple of questions, as usual. I'm, I'm seeing this email about a study for six to twelve months, is that what we're talking about?
The study is going to be for the loading zone?
Okay, for six to twelve.
It's quicker than that, I think the, who said six to twelve?
Okay, so this is, this is a, an email from Darryl Elliott, and it says, parking signs in the East Milton business zone will be only for a maximum limit of two hour free public parking, this change will be studied and revisited in six to twelve months from implementation, so I'm just, I'm just a little confused, because I know that...
No, that's not right.
Okay, because I know that we talked about having a study done by mid-January, okay? This isn't it?
No.
Okay, thank you.
To me, the study is the, the voice of the business owners in East Milton Square, who came to us two weeks ago and asked us to implement this change. I think when Paul was making his remarks, there was some, some confusion over to, over an important detail, I think he was advocating, or he should have been advocating rather, for a two hour time limit in the East Milton Square Business District only, as opposed to the other two business districts, Central Business and the Village. That's my understanding. To me, the study, as I said, is the business owners of East Milton Square, particularly around Christmas time. They need relief, they've come to us, they've presented their points in a very, very clear fashion, and I support it.
Ms. Collins?
So can we get some clarity then, because the email from Darryl, Darryl Elliott did refer to six to twelve months, I thought there was talk about a pilot program, about a holiday program, so I'm a little confused on what the chamber is actually seeking, what we're proposing, as you hear.
So, so, I took from Mr. Elliott's email that the chamber is proposing all of East Milton be two hours, and that we study that over six to twelve months. That's what I understood, that proposal. I don't know that, I don't, I don't know that there's, our, our charge to the group two weeks ago was to try to get an agreement and a compromise, doesn't sound like that's happened.
We did not get with the chamber yet.
Right, but it sounds like Mr. Clark is making a, a proposal...
Yes.
...that the planning department could get behind, that is different from the status quo and may, may be an improvement from the, for the purposes of the, of the business owners for this period.
Just respond to that.
Yeah, Mr. Collins?
Because I, I think my interpretation of it, Mike, is the same as yours, because my recollection of the conversation two weeks ago was, and I think I mentioned this, let's put this in place, let's give it a shot, if it doesn't work out, we can unwind it. So when Darryl used the word "study," I think he's referring to it in the very broad informal sense, we can study this and see if it works. I don't think he's referring to a officially commissioned study, which I think was your point, so I think there's some, there's a disconnect there, but I think he means it in the very broad informal sense. If this isn't working, we can undo it.
But just to that point, what I remembered Chair Tugayis and Mr. Clark talking about
was the fact that we have a number of planning studies in process or going to be started as part of the East Milton, the BLITAP program, which is now led to the steering committee that's looking at East Milton. So I thought that what Cheryl and Tugayis and, and Bill were talking about was we have planning, and I know this is what the MPIC voted, was that we have planning issues going on, we're looking at big projects across town in the business districts, and in particular now moving into East Milton. So, what I would be willing to support is a trial run of something here, but, you know, I, I think as I voiced at the last meeting, I am in favor of the planning process playing itself out. Professional planners that I've heard from in the past, including some of our own planning board members, has, have been that when you have business, you have a business district and you have a combination of long businesses that have clients who may be coming to a business for a couple of hours, and some that are shorter term takeout, you generally have a variety of parking, and you generally have the shorter term parking closer to the takeout businesses, and as you move further out through the district, the parking gets to be longer and longer. That's what a lot of planners have, at different programs I've been at have said. So, I think we want to test that, I'm, I'm willing to see if there's a short-term compromise here while the planning board and the planning staff and the committees that are in place to study East Milton in particular, you have a chance to weigh in on this, and also to try to accommodate the needs of the business owners in the short term, while we see if this works.
And may I ask, Katie, when, when you say a trial run, do you mean a trial run along the lines of what, what Bill is suggesting for a period of time?
It sounds like it's not completely on, it's not completely the same plan that the chamber has put forward, and you haven't had a chance to talk with the chamber, but it's, there's, you know, there's probably overlapping proposals here that make sense. They're looking at all the spaces, you're, you would be exempting three of them, you know, the Brugers store for short-term parking, so, so there may not be agreement between the planning director and the chamber, but I'd be inclined to support the planning director's recommendation rather than the chamber's recommendation.
That's the essence of compromise, Mr. Wells?
So, none of you are gonna be happy with what I'm gonna say here, but the other one always talks about process, because if it were not for me, had I not raised this since June seventeenth, we would have passed this on that night.
Well, excuse me, Richard, that's actually not the case, because I objected to it as well, and I want, and because the MPIC was making the same points.
For fifty years or more, we've had a traffic commission, and I just, hear me out on this, the traffic commission was created in our town bylaws, and it specifically articulates who serves on that traffic commission, including Mr. Clark. Every recommendation in my thirty-something years on the police department, including Tenet's chair of the traffic commission and every chair before me, came to this board by way of the traffic commission. That's the statutory way it goes, that's the town bylaw way it goes. Never seen a discussion like this about anything that should be coming from the traffic commission. To include, let's change this, we had a recommendation to the traffic commission that the chamber has supported. I talked to the chair of the traffic commission on Sunday, he's not changed, nor has the traffic commission changed their view on this whatsoever, but they do agree they would go along with just doing East Milton and going back to Central and the Village. Let me finish. That's the process. None of us are operational. Even though I spent my whole life in operations, I'm not anymore. You've heard me say many times, I don't go in the police station, because I'm not the chief. That's all, but I sit here, the chief does sit, the fire chief sits, Mr. Clark sits, Mr. Thompson sits, Lieutenant Alba sits, Chase Berkeley sits, Bill Ritchie sits. Those are our operational experts who make recommendations to this board. I've never once, neither, sitting on this board in the past three years or coming before this board for ten years, had a board change. They've sent recommendations and asked for things, but never change a recommendation that came to. We're sitting here having a discussion like where it's someone's kitchen table, it's through this, and, and I have great respect for Cheryl Tugayis, and I told her afterwards at the tap meeting, look, if you want to have this discussion, if you have these concerns, you need to go and have these discussions at the traffic commission, because they who ultimately are our operational people make their recommendations. Furthermore, when I became chief in two thousand and seven, I went from fifty-six officers to fifty in a matter of less than eighteen months because of budgetary cuts. And when I left in two thousand, halfway through two thousand sixteen, I still had never got it back to fifty-five, and I still don't think it's there yet today. But given that, given that, in creating all these different parking time limits, part of it was because we just didn't have the manpower to put someone there all the time. It was limited resources townwide for parking enforcement, which is how we created, when I was chief, the board was Katie, David, and Tom Early, created the position of parking enforcement officer. Now he's there, he's out there every day. I can see why they recommended this, it makes it easier for him to enforce on top of all the amenities it brings, and what makes it worse is, now we're going to the busiest time of the year. So I don't, all I want to do is make, with the exception of two, two things, is make a motion to, the agenda round that was proposed is to approve the recommendations of the traffic commission presented to standardize time restriction parking in the East Milton District, Business District at two hour, that's, that's the motion I want to make now. And I'll even go so far to expire on June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty, and we can take it up. But our, when our operational people, when we left town meeting last night, it was snowy and, it was the DPW who got us home, were the police officers and the firefighters who were out there last night and tonight, those are our operational people. If the one thing I've learned that I'm gonna carry with me in this job for as long as I'm here, is to support those people. Nothing from our traffic commission has changed, has it, Bill? Nothing.
No.
Nothing, with the exception of them agreeing that they can live with this. So that's my motion, and I think that's what we need to do. We're sitting here talking about this like, like we know what we're talking about. We're making suggestions, the square is, we always look at tree lighting, those people are there for traffic, the square's a mess, this is one way we at least can deal with the parking and standardize it for at least the next six months, so that's my motion, to expire on June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty, it's a six-month trial.
Motion's been made.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded, so let me, let me just say a word of our process. The, the process here is whether we're gonna accept the recommendations of the traffic commission.
We should at least have a...
If I could finish.
All right.
The process is whether we're gonna accept the recommendations of the traffic commission. Doesn't seem to me that we are required to rubber stamp the recommendations of the traffic commission, it seems to me that we can amend, and we have before, since I've been here, amend some of the recommendations of the traffic commission if we have further evidence, so it seems to me that it's not improper, and in fact, we would be doing that by this motion, their recommendation was townwide, and so in this motion, we would not be accepting in full the recommendation of the traffic commission, we would be amending it even with your motion. Seems to me we could do that based on the, based on the, based on the input of the planning director as well, so that's, that's just a word about process. Other comments, questions? We have a motion on the floor, Ms. Collins?
Just to that point, because I saw an email from the chamber saying that, believing that the planning board and the planning staff had no real role here, and this is solely a traffic role, I disagree with that, I think the parking... I think the parking and traffic are key components of any economic development proposal that we have in town, and certainly in our key business districts. You want the input from the planning board, you want the input from the master planning limitation committee, from the East Milton Steering Committee that's just been created. So I think that those boards definitely have a role to play, and this is not solely a traffic commission recommendation. And we have the planning director as a member of the traffic commission, and...
And he voted for it.
And it is an advisory... It is an advisory board to this body, and we are not required to rubber stamp it. What I actually heard the planning director say was that the traffic commission did not vote to change... The traffic commission vote was regarding signage, if I heard you correctly earlier, Bill.
Standardize the signage.
Well, I think, just to clarify, I think we have the vote...
I have the vote, it's a request.
From the Traffic Commission minutes from June, a request to standardize all time-restricted parking in business districts to two hours was presented by the Milton Chamber of Commerce, presumably the similar presentation that was made to us, and said that the traffic commission supports this recommendation. So that's what their recommendation was to us. Mr. Farrington.
I would like to respond to Katie's comments. I don't think... I'm only speculating, but I'm pretty confident that nobody's trying to discount or discredit the importance or the validity of these studies that have occurred and that are taking place. I think really the issue with respect to that sort of conflict has to do with the timing of it, okay? They need relief now, in the busiest time of the year, and these studies are still, you know, it's a little vague as to when they're going to be complete and what the finding will be, and so on and so forth. I don't think anyone's saying, "We're not attaching any importance to those studies and what the results of the studies might be." It's just that, again, I'm just bringing this back to my fundamental point, which is this, it's the business owners of East Milton Square. Nobody knows the square better than they do. And I would argue, I would even go so far as to argue that they may know it even better than a professional consultant. I really would. I mean, they live it every day, and they're asking us for relief, and I'd like to grant it to them. And if we discover that it's not working, or that it creates some problems that are unforeseen, we can then make another change. I think this is becoming more complicated than it needs to be. I really do.
Other comments, questions? So I believe the motion on the floor doesn't include changing the loading zone, because that wasn't part of the traffic commission recommendation. So, and I may be wrong about that, but that's my understanding. Richard?
Yeah, because a loading zone... They were referring to time-restricted parking, a loading zone is not time-restricted parking.
Right. So they did not recommend changing the loading zone. So that wouldn't be part of... That's not part of the motion right now, changing the loading zone. So we wouldn't be accepting Bill's suggestion if we go with Richard's motion. If that's the case, it seems to me, as we sit here, the only disagreement we may have, and correct me if I'm wrong, may be those three 15-minute parking spots, and I think Bruegers is a 15, and there may be two 30s next to that. But anyway, so I think that those three spots are the only, maybe the only issue between getting a positive vote on that. So let me ask the members if to comment on that.
Yeah, as I understand...
I'll accept... Do you accept as a friendly amendment to exclude the 15 minutes, the three 15-minute spaces?
I'd be opposed to that, because I think that's the crux of the issue, the confusion as to what is what, and, you know, this is this and that's that. So they've addressed that, and they've come up with a proposal, and they said, "We would like two-hour..."
Standardize.
Exactly. Rather than this hodgepodge of confusion and so on and so forth. That, to me, is what has led to this in the beginning.
Mr. Wells.
As Elaine knows, so the discussion from this...
Elaine.
Our local reporter may take notice of it.
She's in the story now.
Well, she... Because as The Times reported last week, whether it was the chamber, the Rotary... Was it the Rotary we went to, the Rotary meeting? Many came out and were attacked. And much of that was based on, particularly on the governor's roadside of Adams Street, because they've heard the discussion, and everybody thought we'd go to two-hour parking in the square. And as a matter of fact, that was the first thing I heard people say, like, "It's two hour." It never got changed. So I just, I think that's why I made the motion. So if you want me to make a friendly amendment to, you know, to exclude the three 15... All time-restricted, to exclude the three 15-minute parking spaces on Adams and Granite Ave, I think it's two-in-one, I'll make that, I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Well, I don't think that was the suggestion. I think the suggestion that Bill was making, and Bill, correct me, is just the Granite Street. I don't think Bill is suggesting that we should do anything on Adams. I think he's suggesting we should go two hours all the way down on the...
In front of the Greenspan building.
Yeah, on the... That would be the westbound side of Granite, of Adams, sorry, of Adams. Westbound side of Adams, I think Bill's suggesting two hours for all of those. And on Granite, he's suggesting two hours except for those three spaces before, right at the end, before Bruegers. Is that right, Bill?
I was just trying to give the...
I want to see you at your next traffic commission meeting.
So what was that, Bill?
I tried to respond to what happened at the last planning board meeting. Where they said, "Find some solution to this."
Fair enough, fair enough.
I did. I listened to what Paul had to say, and I understand what he's trying to do for two-hour I did vote to stand to... That we should standardize the signage down there, because there's just too much. Some things say nothing, some things give you a timeframe, some of them just say two hours, others say two hours and when you can park on that. It's a... It was just getting to a much more standard sign that the commission voted for. Coming up with, picking numbers here, it's, "What are we doing for those businesses down there? How do we make their life easier?" That was the attempt.
Other comments, questions? Ms. Conlon.
So just three. So first, the reason for the urgency, and I'll put that in air quotes, the sense of urgency down there, this is not because of the time of year, because of the holidays. Sense of urgency is because there's no enforcement officer who's ticketing cars down there, and cars were not getting ticketed previously, and people are still seeing the signage and they're parking in the spaces that say 30 minutes, and they're parking there for longer than getting a ticket. So number one, the urgency is created by the ticketing. Number two, if we were to make the change, to come in with the... Use Richard's motion, but the change that the planner had recommended regarding the three parking spaces, that's a variation of what the traffic commission recommended, which may be fine, but that's a variation. Number three, you know, what we charged at our last meeting, what the vote of this board was, was to ask the planning director to work with the chamber to see if a compromise could be reached. They haven't yet had that conversation.
Right.
So there's a proposal by the chamber, there's a proposal by the planning director. I'm more inclined to support the planning director's proposal, but they haven't had a chance to talk yet. So in essence, if we were to vote tonight, then we're kind of preempting what we voted the last time, which was to see if they could come up with something that worked from a planning perspective and also worked for the chamber. So I think we should just be aware of that, that we may be varying what our vote was the last time.
And I'm not sure if, and I may be wrong, I'm not sure if there was a vote, Katie, I think we just kind of all agreed.
Per consensus.
It was a consensus, yes. Mr. Wells.
I just go back to, this is an operational request that our operational people are asking for. The chamber's supporting, I think it was in focus, which I made my motion based on the traffic commission's recommendation with the amendment to giving leeway to the planning director for all that she's doing in the village. And I said this to Katie a minute, I see the village and Central Office District as a total different animal from East Milton.
All right, so we have a motion. We have a motion to accept the traffic commission's recommendation with respect to...
East Milton.
East Milton. Now, that would cover, if we accepted that, Richard, if that was the motion, Richard, that would cover also the eastbound section...
Standardize, so my motion going back to request to standardize all time-restricted parking in the business district of East Milton to two hours, as was presented to the traffic, by the Milton Chamber of Commerce and supported by the traffic commission.
So those 30-minute spots, which are on the eastbound side of Adams, would become two hours. Those are the ones in front of the House of Pizza, in front of Dunkin' Donuts, in front of the nail salon.
I think that's where you're seeing the majority of the citations being issued.
I don't know about that. Yeah, I don't know. So...
Mine was.
Yeah, that's what yours was. No, no, forget you. He was just...
Richard, could I make a friendly amendment effective through June 30th of 2020?
Yeah, June 30th. I added that. That's part of my motion, through June 30th of 2020. That gives six months.
So you had indicated, Richard, you were going to accept if someone were to offer a friendly amendment to carve out the three parking spaces that Bill identified in front of Bruegers and Cumin, and it sounds like we have an open issue regarding the... And so I don't know if you're still willing to accept that or not. And then we've got the westbound, or the eastbound, rather, side of Adams Street.
I'll accept A, not bad. Let's get as close to standardize as we can. 15 minutes, I still, and I know that, was told like Mr. Chan's on, but I still think, from my op, and I think that if we were having this discussion at the traffic commission, I think they'd probably agree with us that having some 15 minutes for just quick pickup is warranted, and I think we're going to probably want the same thing at Central Avenue. When we get to, at some point when we get to, I think they'll still want to keep something like that.
So the chamber is saying they want some 15 minutes?
No, no, I think we will. I'm thinking we will still want some. I think you have to think about those stop and pick. Initially, I believe it was Mr. Chan who came, made, with the chamber, who made the initial proposal for the 15s...
He did.
...in the square.
Three spots.
But that was when he was strictly a takeout business.
Five to nine.
Um...
Twenty for six months.
I understand, I understand. So here's my only question, is three spots at the 15 minutes or 30 minutes, is that too many?
Whatever it is.
No, is it too many?
If you're saying it's three, whatever it is, if it's three, if it's two, it's two, if it's three, it's three. Whatever the number is, like the existing 15 minutes in East Milton are made.
On Granite?
No, it's two on Adams. No, two are on Adams. Aren't two of them on Adams Street?
There's three on Adams.
Yeah, they're on Adams.
But I think Bill was suggesting that those should be two hours.
I said there was three here, and you're saying there's one here.
Yeah, I see. Yes, that's right. I think that's right.
You're keeping...
I just think whatever the existing 15s is...
So you keep those 15 minutes, and everything else is two hours.
Two hours. I'll accept that as a friendly. Through June 30th of 2020.
Okay, so I thought the friendly amendment related to Granite Ave, not Adams Street. So the friendly amendment you're accepting is for Adams Street, not Granite Ave.
The whole thing.
I hear you, but I have...
Whatever's 15, we accept.
Two, one 15 on...
I have a question, and I'm not trying to confuse you.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
These are 5:00 to 9:00, 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. So it's just at night during the pickup.
Okay.
What's that?
It's 15 minutes all the time.
So I'm not... So I'm excluding the 15-minute signage, excluding 15-minute signage.
Okay. So those three signs, two on, we think...
Whatever it is, whatever, no matter what it is, I'm just excluding 15-minute, existing 15-minute parking.
Two on Adams, we think, and one on Granite. Okay. Be nice to have actual evidence, but sometimes you have to make...
I know what it is.
Pardon me, pardon me, pardon me, pardon me. Sometimes you have to make decisions on less than perfect information. So, I'm sorry, what were you going to say, Richard?
Sometimes? No, I'm saying whatever's existing is existing.
Yeah, got it. Bill? Anything further? All right, motion has... So we had a friendly amendment?
Yes, I accepted.
I didn't offer it.
Nobody's offered it.
I thought you did, I thought you offered it.
No, you said if someone were to offer it.
So if someone offers that, what I said, if someone is excluding the existing 15 minutes, I'll accept it.
I understand. You can actually...
I'll make it myself.
You can make it yourself as well.
No, I'll make that as a friendly amendment, excluding those...
Existing 15 minutes.
Existing 15-minute parking spots not to exceed three total spots. That's what we just all agreed upon, right?
I don't even think you even have to say that.
Well, no one's agreed to anything yet.
No, no, no. But that's... We've agreed that the spots, there's some uncertainty as to where they're located, but they do not exceed the number three.
That's why I'm just using the word existing. I just use the word existing, just to make it easier for them.
Perfectly illustrates the point of why this is proposed in the first place, is the confusion surrounding, in any event.
I get it.
All right.
I'm compromising here, I'm trying to get compromised.
All right, any other comments, questions? Ms. Conlon.
Yeah, I was just going to say on the record, so I'm going to vote no, because I believe that the... I would have supported the planning director's proposal, which would be to keep the eastbound side of Adams Street, where you have Dunkin' Donuts, Milton House of Pizza, and other takeout businesses across the street, 30 minutes. And I think there is a, there are a lot of takeout businesses in the square. My understanding is there is still need for some short-term 30-minute or 15-minute parking from time to time. So I would be in favor of the planning director's proposal, but I'm not going to vote for the traffic commission proposal with the friendly amendment. I'm just stating my reasons.
Okay.
Want to vote?
Well, yeah. I mean, I'm trying to decide how I'm going to vote. I'd be more comfortable as well with the 30 minutes on the eastbound side as well, but...
So just going back to what you said, and I've been watching this every day, that's where the majority of the tickets are, because that's why I'm accepting the 15s, but the 30s, someone who's trying to go for 30 is usually there longer than the 30, and that's where it comes, so...
Ms. Conlon.
I would feel much more comfortable, well, first of all, it's six months, so that makes me feel better. But also just to know that the business owners who we're talking about on the eastbound side are talked to, and we don't just go through the chamber. Not that I think that anybody would be trying to spin anything, that's not what I'm saying, but it would just add layers, and just hearing from them directly about, "Yes, it's worked really well," or, "Well, no, it hasn't, and why," I would just appreciate that, you know, after the six months, or even before, you know, just to check in, which I know I'm free to do, but I just wanted to say that I'm concerned, I'm interested to see what actually the two hours would do on that side.
I just go back to you have to have faith in those who do the work for you. And some of those businesses, I mean, the ones that come to mind immediately are Dunkin' Donuts and Santander, I mean, they're really big, monster, corporate-type businesses. I don't think they're involved in the chamber. I, I think I can speak for the Travers Insurance Agency that they're supportive of this.
Huge.
And Paul raised a good point last time, which was just because the, the time limit allows for two hours does not mean that every single bus, they will use the two hours. So we have to keep that in mind as well, and factor that into our decision making. I think this makes a lot of sense. I support it. You all know where I stand, so my vote is squarely in favor of this.
Other comments, questions? All right, so, so, um, so I'm going to, I'm going to support it as well. I think, you know, given the timeframe, it makes sense. It's only six months. It may be useful during the, during this season. It may be useful with respect to the new traffic enforcement officer and mitigating the, the concern that the businesses have, are having with respect to the traffic enforcement officer and the, the limited parking. And so, so I'm inclined to support the, the motion as amended. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Four to one. All right, thank you, Bill. Sorry to keep you here so late. Thank you for your help, very helpful. And.
See you in a few weeks.
That's right.
He's going to know what we're going to know like ASAP, that, what, are we here tomorrow?
What, we're here tomorrow?
Going back to.
Yeah, this is Mr. Freitag, this is Mr. Freitag.
I don't know that we're going to here tomorrow, but we're going to us tomorrow.
So, so operationally, this is now, and do you understand, Mr. Dennehy, what we, what we just did? I do, I think, yeah. Anything that says 30 will become two hours.
Exactly right.
Yeah, all right, fair enough. In East Milton Square only. In East Milton Square only.
And any one, and any one-hour ones.
All right. All right, item eight, I don't think we need, because it was a discussion of town meeting articles, which we've already discussed, and do you vote it on?
You scared me. What happened now?
Item nine, Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I have two, two small items. Allison Mull, who's Chair of the Milton Cultural Council, has reached out to Public Works. They're exploring the possibility of commissioning artists to decoratively paint some traffic light signal boxes in town. It was a huge success in Boston when we undertook it. These are the rectangular electrical boxes, not the actual traffic signal itself, which could be distractionary for those crossing. These are the larger electrical boxes, which oftentimes are riddled with graffiti stickers, bumper stickers, stuff like that. This would be a very artistic approach to color up some, some of the town. So they're just looking for some guidance and permission, quite honestly, to, to explore the possibility of, of some decorative painting on some of these boxes throughout town.
So it's not on the agenda for our approval. I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that it's something that we need to approve, frankly. And I'm not sure that it doesn't fall within your realm.
Okay.
But, but I'm, but I, the other members may want to weigh in on that.
I view it just as the Town Administrator using it as a sounding board, and I'm, you know, I have no issues with it.
Yeah, I think that's right. I think it's within your responsibility. I, I'm certainly in favor, in favor of it. Anyone else want to?
If they look like a New York City street cast, six months from now, you'll be hearing from us.
Well, there's, there's a rule among graffiti, that you don't tag someone's tags.
Yeah, I know.
That was the premise we went with in Boston, and it actually worked quite well, that an artist won't touch another artist's canvas. So I, I appreciate your support on this. That committee meets tomorrow night, so they were just looking for a little bit of guidance. I've touched the wall. I'll relay back to them the support from this board.
I sent you an email.
Thank you. And the second one, I just want to thank everyone who worked so hard over the last 48 hours, everyone from our public safety, police, fire, ambulance, to our, Mr. Wells calls them the operative people in town, Public Works, Parks, Consolidated Facilities, everyone that had, took part in the last 48 hours. A pretty lengthy storm that I thought the town looked great throughout.